This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call a meeting in order with everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. First order of business is for approval of our agenda. Is there any changes, Bruce?
One correction, Mr. Chairman, under general business, I have not yet received the 2025 SDSU extension agreement, so we'll put that on the agenda for December 31st. Otherwise, I don't know of any changes.
Okay?
Motion approved, amended.
Second. A motion is second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts? Okay, seeing none. Need approval of our meeting minutes from November 26th.
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion is second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The home care's account with the creator.
All right, this is as of November 30th, 2024. Total amount of deposits in the bank is 29,769,509.80. Included in that total is a bank balance of 27,239,480.97. U.S. bank balance is 1,463,839.86. Money market, 1,66,188.97. Total amount of actual cash is 1,350. Total amount of checks and drafts in the treasurer's possession not exceeding three days is 134,593.56. And then the cash is 7,807.94. Petty cash, $2,725, for a total of 29,915,986.30.
Move approval of the other's account with the treasurer. Second. We have a motion is second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Has everyone had an opportunity on the bills? I've had my questions answered.
As have I.
I have too. Motion to approve the bill?
Second. Okay, a motion is second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any travel requests, President?
Chairman, I have a travel request, but it is going to be done under Highway Business, so I'll address that then.
All right, go on to personnel.
Okay. Under the Sheriff's Department. Can we just read all of them?
Sure.
Okay. So these are the Sheriff's Department. We have a new hire, Caleb Benson, a part-time fill-in employee, dispatcher two, grade three, base pay of 25.34. Hunter Wood is a new hire, correction officer one, grade one, and the base pay that's listed on yours is for 2025, so the 2024 base pay is 22.93, and this is a full-time permanent position, emergency hire dated 12/5/2024. Blaze Ega Horse, this is a new hire. It's a part-time fill-in position, correction officer two. Also, the base pay you have listed is for 2025, so the 2024 base pay is 25.34. This will be affected on 12/17/24. And then Mackenzie Gerald, this is a classification change, going to a dispatcher one, grade three, base pay of 25.05, and that's the 2025 wage. It's a full-time permanent position. This will be effective on January 31st of 2025.
Move to approve all of the sheriff department personnel changes.
Second.
Caleb, motion is second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Chairman, also I have an extension for a FMLA for Deborah Corrine. Would like to extend that to, since she has exhausted her FMLA and to continue the employment as a reasonable accommodation until January 14th of 2025.
Okay. Move through. A second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? What's FMLA?
Feminical weed. Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Chairman, I have two in the public defender's office. For Becky Stevenson, this is for a public defender, chief deputy, grade 10, base pay of $3,763.88, and that is the 2025 wage. This will be a full-time permanent employee. This will be effective on 12/30/2024. And then also Shad Brown, public defender, deputy, grade six, base pay of 3,349.93. This is also a full-time permanent position, and that also again is the 2025 wage, effective on 12/30/2024.
Chairman Ambrose, here if you have any questions.
Do both of those people come in with quite a little experience, why they're six and 10?
They, they, they did. They did. In fact, Mr. Brown has equivalent to me, 28-ish years, and Ms. Stevenson has about 15 years.
I see.
So I would just be moving Becky from a deputy to the chief deputy position, and Mr. Brown up one grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Abatement, Mr. Trigle.
We have a mobile horn burned down. Back in November of 20, November of 21, 21, so we need to abate off the 23 payable in 24 taxes. The value was 47,572, or correction, 752, and the amount of taxes is $634.80.
Move to follow recommendation.
Second. Well, Kate, we have a motion in a second to follow recommendation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then I just have an update on the interest. I'm sorry, I didn't have these out when Bruce took the phones out because I was still waiting for one more interest to come, and I have some for the public if they need some or would want one. But I did very, very well with the interest this year. This just includes the interest in my, in the bank, in the sweep account and our savings account. This does not have anything to do with the Collier money that we just pulled over. But between working with, moving it back and forth from sweep account into what we need to pay bills and working with Brenda when we have big bills coming in and just keeping what we can, we hit the million-dollar mark of interest for 2024.
Nice job.
I don't know. I'm hoping we can keep good for next year, but the interest has dropped down from 5.1%. I'm down to 4.7%, but that dropped right around the election time, so we'll see hopefully what happens in January if it goes back up. But it's been working good, working between Wells Fargo and First Interstate right now. Moving back and forth between the sweep and when I have a bunch of extra money from taxes and everything, I get it over to Wells Fargo, the sweep, and make as much as we can. Brenda says we have a bridge to pay for, then I move money back over and pay this, but we work out very well together. So we're doing good with interest.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And we've got automatic budget supplement, Sheriff's Travel.
Yes, this here is just a supplement for the 2019 Dodge Durango. This should be the final supplement with this. The vehicle has been repaired, and so this is just the last part of it.
There was an initial check for the damages that were made, and then there was a supplemental check that was issued, so it was bringing it back to Sheriff's Travel.
Just need a motion to allow me to move that over.
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion is second to make new. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Kate, you've got a contingency transfer for mental health.
Yes, some. With the mental health budget, it's again one of those where you're just kind of a guessing game at the beginning of the year, and we're to the point where the budget is depleted, and so I would like a motion to allow me to transfer 3,000 out of the contingency.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have an ambulance?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your consideration is the 2025 extension agreement with Spearfish Ambulance, previously backed down along from Monument Health, and we did with Monument Health, the one that's the primary in the city of Sturgis. I'd be looking for authorization to just, any changes? No changes other than the dates?
Okay?
Motion to have the chairman sign. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow the chairman to sign the document. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I see in the paper where Sturgis reduced their M. speed by a little, so that would affect us on Boulder Canyon, right?
I've had no indication to that effect. As far as I know, the most recent word I had was, I think yesterday, was that the current agreement was going to be presented to the city council at an upcoming meeting, and hopefully I'll have it back for you by your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And the next time would be the B. Lawrence Fair Board Agreement. You know that, Bruce?
Yeah, 2025 B. Lawrence Fair Board Agreement, same as last year, then it changes the dates. It's been signed by the chairman of the county. We'll be looking for authorization to have our chair on.
So moved.
Second. Kate, we have a motion is second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, we don't have the SDSU extension, so we need operations to declare a surplus miscellaneous desk parts.
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Go ahead.
These are items that are stored up in lead in the storage building, and there are some miscellaneous desk parts that are not needed, and so I need to have a motion to allow us to dispose of them and get them out of the storage building so we can get that emptied by the end of the year, so we don't have to continue to pay storage fees.
These are all, this is all equipment, office supplies that we received on surplus from the state of South Dakota, so we haven't paid anything for them. We haven't been paying for a storage fee, but now none of this is needed now for the new building, so it's time to part ways.
Do we?
State's okay with that?
Yeah, just put it on our surplus auction, or how do we do that?
Greg and company have been doing these surplus auctions online, I think.
Okay.
Right kind of rolling situation, so I think it would be on that.
This, this particular, these items will be, we rented dumpsters, and they will be disposed.
Oh.
Yes. Yeah, they're just parts that are not needed.
We'll be declaring the desk parts surplus. Second. Kate, we have a motion in a second to declare them surplus. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Karen Bean, you have the floor, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen.
We've got a couple of minutes before our bid opening.
Is that where we're at? A couple of minutes, yeah? Okay. We'll jump to different. Please, the chairman, I'd just like to address our Public Safety and Services Center. Just in an effort to bring everybody back up to speed in what we're looking at today, as a quick summary of events that have taken place over the last couple of years to date, there have been six change orders for this building project. The first change order dated June 23rd of 2022 established a cut in costs of approximately $3,349,000. The second change order came approximately one year later, on July 11th, 2023, whereby RCS requested and was granted an extension in the contractual completion date of 31 days. The request was based on lost workdays due to weather, and the agreed-upon new date of completion was established as September 25th, 2024. The fourth change order was documented on July 23rd of this year and listed 15 other items needed to be corrected or otherwise adjusted, most of which were at our request. These changes were accompanied with an assessment of workdays, which added to the total of 38 days. Change order number four was with a letter from RCS dated October 6th. The letter specifically requested that 38 days be added to the contractual date of completion and delineated a new date of completion as November 18th of this year. Change order number five was documented on November 11th and listed a number of additional changes or adjustments made largely at our request. As for the standard, these adjustments came with an assessment of days in which to complete the changes. At our request, order number five was approved as to the cost, but the requested days were not approved as we wished to have more days to review the request. Today you have change order number six. This change order directly deals with the number of days requested to accomplish those items delineated in change order number five. In short, RCS is requesting six days be added to the contractual date of completion with a new date by contract which would reflect November 26th, 2024. It is our recommendation that this be approved, and I would add a couple of thoughts in.
Okay, let's, let's hold right there for just a little bit and let you take care of your bid opening, which was advertised for 8:15, and then we'll finish up with the other.
Sounds good.
And this is for the equipment to go in the new van, correct?
That's correct. So we've already purchased the van, and this is the, basically the insert that goes in the van.
Okay, and some more related equipment too, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you receive one bid?
Yes.
So it's from Sontec out of Rapid. So their bid is 59,934.50.
Fifty.
Fifty cents.
You want to go review it if that's any, come back to us.
Yes.
Kate, Kate, Sheriff, if you, if that was the only bid, we'll let the boys review it, and we'll continue with your.
All right, thank you. Okay, so again, it's our recommendation, coming from your committee, and specifically Bruce and I, that you approve the six days, and I would offer some thoughts for your consideration. Up until this very moment, this project has not been behind. In fact, we're right on pace for where we would anticipate, being given the weather and the changes that we've requested. That having been said, we had a time of some critical mass where we had to get our PSAP moved up there, or we were in fear of not being able to get that PSAP moved until 2026. This is a time when RCS stepped up to the plate, along with their subcontractors, and showed us what would nearly be considered a miracle construction. We had several meetings with everybody in the room. I explained, as did Bruce, the nature of our critical status, and they understood the need and showed us some very interesting things. And what I saw during that process, while that it is accepted that this is not just a building to us, we've got a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of emotion wrapped up into this project, and we learned through the process of getting our PSAP moved up there that RCS is no different. It's not just a building to them, nor to their subcontractors. They got a lot of pride and a tremendous amount of effort to make this work for us. So moving forward, while an actual or literal date of completion still somewhat eludes us, I can attest that we are very close to having this building turned over to us, and the skill that's being displayed and the product that is being produced is second to none, in my opinion, and I encourage support in RCS or for RCS in this request.
Chairman, I would note that 25 from Elabatis is online as well, and we can, them as part of making this recommendation as well.
That's correct, and we might note that our site superintendent Greg Nolan is here, as is the president of RCS, RC.
And so I think the request is authorization to have the chairman sign the change order with the date reflected therein.
That is correct.
I would move for that to happen.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow the chairman to sign the document. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's what I have. Unless the board has anything for me, I'll return just as soon as we get to crunching some numbers. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Brenda? Couple of minutes. We'll kind of coast here for a couple of minutes. We have another public hearing at 8:25, which we're very close to. I'm going to need the recording now with the.
Yes.
Okay. We're back online. This is a time and place for a public hearing. Supplemental budget, coroner, coroner salary, $3,500. Ms. Brenda?
So this here is a supplement to the coroner's salary budget for $3,500. Just the increase of coroner calls and then, of course, autopsy companies, coroner calls. So I'm just requesting a motion for you to do that after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, this is a public hearing. It's a time and place. If there's anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak to this or against, we'll allow that opportunity right now. If you choose to speak, please stand up, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing anything? One more time, would anyone like to speak for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to board for discussion or action.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Miss for me, we're ready for you, sir. And we've got about three minutes before we can do the bid opening on the paving project. So let's uh, let's cover the reappointment first.
Uh, yes, I think by state law every two years you are to consider the reappointment of your highway superintendent. I think John considers himself to be a continuing applicant for that.
Yeah.
Still willing?
I've really enjoyed my time as your superintendent. I'd like your consideration for reappointment.
Well, if I could make the motion, I would certainly make it.
I, I will make that motion.
Okay. Sorry. We have a motion in a second to reappoint our highway superintendent for another two years. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Let's all see all of us. Let's all see all of us.
Sure, the conference, go ahead and prepare your report, even though you didn't vote.
Yeah.
He's got his NACE conference.
Yeah, we can do your travel request.
I did put in for a travel request to attend the NACE conference in Schaumburg, Illinois.
Take up the time that we need and go ahead with that.
Thank you.
I think it's a conference that Alan has worked with in the past as well, isn't it?
Yeah, Alan was there. Alan actually was also on the board, the NACE board. I am on the South Coast Association board. I am not on the NACE board. I still like to attend this conference. You know, these are the conferences that, this is the national conference, so anything that they present that trickles down to the county level, it starts there. So um, last year I went at, at the expense of the uh, the association, the South Coast Association, the county highway superintendents. Unfortunately, that's a one-time deal, so this is, this one will be on us. So I do have the estimate of the cost of travel of one thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Not a hundred percent sure of the travel expenses at this time. There's a, there was a handful of superintendents that are planning on possibly driving, so I might, I might be driving. So I haven't decided yet on that, but I did put down the travel expense at two hundred fifty dollars.
Where is that job?
It's in Schaumburg, Illinois, which is, I believe, a suburb of Chicago, I think.
I believe it was budgeted for two, right, John?
Our travel budget. I'm just taking it out of our travel budget, which annually we got a budget of four thousand dollars in our travel budget.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I hope you can probably get started. This is the time and place for a bid opening on the twenty twenty-five paving project to Reno Road, three point six-three miles.
I also, Brenda, I think she passed them out to you, the engineer's estimate and a line item of the engineer's estimate. We do have representatives here from interstate engineering to review these bids before we make a final decision.
Looks like you got a fair amount of bids.
Uh, looks like we have three here, so we'll start opening them up.
Were there any addendums to no?
There's no addendums to this, this year, so don't worry about that. The first one is, I have here is from Sacerson Paving. There is a bid bond. It's dated and stamped. Sacerson Paving's uh, amount is one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. That's one, two, four, one, one eight, six point five. Western Construction is the next one I have here. Bid bond is enclosed. Western Construction, Construction's bid is one million, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That's one, zero, two, seven, two, two, eight point zero. Simon Construction is the next bid. This is our last bid. Yes, the bid bond is here. Simon's bid is one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, fifteen dollars even. That's one, two, three, nine, zero, one, five point zero.
Okay, can I ask you if we'd like a little bit of time to review?
Let our consultant review these and then we'll come back to it.
What's that?
Yep.
Hey, John, I'm gonna interrupt you just for a quick second.
Go ahead.
The sheriff has returned. Did you have a decision for us, Sheriff?
Yes, we do. That's the chief deputy to address it.
So going through Sheriff Steen's budget, he did budget that amount for, for next year's service. Attitude except this bid for fifty-nine thousand, nine thirty-four fifty, I saw it taken out of Rapid.
And that was, you were expecting it to come in high. It's just not a cheap install. It is what it is.
Prospect, but it is uh, near, it's within a couple hundred dollars of what we budgeted.
Okay. Motion to accept the bid, waiving all irregularities.
So, okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the bid. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. You, you may continue, sir.
Okay. Um, so I have one group of utility permits and this is from Keating Resources, the Deer Mountain Development, Deer Mountain Club. Twenty twenty-one LLC is the name of the company that's in charge of their water system, I guess. They have applied for three separate locations. I, I'll just present them as one. I have inspected the area and it's in, it's consistent with their whole water system up there. They're trying to get water to the, to the west side of the newest portion of the development that was approved. So I would recommend the approval of these permits. I did put the stipulation, just because we did have a past incident, that I would not, I would like to not allow hydrants or vents or any kind of protrusions near the edge of the road. So I did put a, a twenty foot to the edge of the road distance, which you can put it to the outer edge of the right over for any kind of hydrants. All their hydrants are on their property except for two. They managed to somehow get them right next to our road. I've asked them to remove those and move them and they're still in place. We're still working on that. But I want to make sure that this permit addresses that.
Okay.
Motion to follow our recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to follow highway superintendent's recommendation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Um, I also had brought in earlier, you've seen the letter of concurrence for the Christianson Drive Bridge and I believe you got the contracts which were already approved for your signature, so that's taken care of. That's all I have. I do believe we have some stuff for the city of Stairfish here and also master transportation and stuff.
Yes, Mr. Maya is here from the city of Stairfish to present your staff report and see cooperations. Have the highway superintendent sign a plat as a highway authority. You have a copy of her report in your mission material. I believe the vicinity is Centennial, uh, Centennial Mountain area, access by the Pendo Road, Dock's Place, and then easement to get the four lots that are being subdivided. And with that, I would defer to.
Hi, everyone. Um, just kind of a quick summary here. So there's four lots being platted as well as a remainder of this hundred and sixty acre tract. There's no additional public right-of-way dedicated. There is going to be an easement that's not shown on this preliminary plat, but will be required on the final plat for turnaround at the end of Dock's Place. And then that private access to those four lots will be gated ultimately. Happy to take any questions on this.
The city being drawn the roads?
Yep. The developers.
Developers.
And the roads are already cutted.
So this ends up coming out on the Pendo Road, which is a county road, and that's why.
But it comes out onto a portion of Pendo that the county does not observe as a portion of the highway system.
Maybe it's answered before you get there, right?
Correct. And then it doesn't really affect the county roads at all, other than any increased traffic on the Pendo Road, which would be minimal.
Might be a scenario where you can get your quickly deed theory where you'll.
If we.
Do you think that you have any?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we have the highway superintendent sign uh, with the understanding that we don't have a skin in this game. It, it eventually hits a county road, but somebody has to sign it, so.
Second.
I need a little motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this because I absolutely will not support this for other reasons. So all of those in favor of the motion will say aye. And Brenda, would you please do a roll call?
Megan.
Aye.
Tisdale.
Aye.
Slade.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Aye.
Ewing.
No.
Okay, motion has.
Mr. Shutter, may I? It's, I think the motion would reflect, as the county has done in the past, the motion is essentially the county, to the extent it has any interest, if any at all, it signs as highway authority, but is not saying that it has control or has a major responsibility for that portion of the road. It's meant to facilitate the recording on the plat. Sound?
Yes, thank you.
Um, can we have a few minutes of transition over? Iain is here from PLJ and I need to get your stuff up on my computer. Okay, five minutes, five minute break, please.
Has it, is it two of the fire raker?
Jeff Miller. Yeah, they're five wickers each.
I read about that. I wonder if they're gonna put on the ones.
Yep, that's the one.
How come you uh, didn't change the two?
Is, um, I think the address that's another slide as well, but um, just with growth, perhaps folks uh, moving in to the county, there is uh, uh, there's a, an interest in more uh, pedestrian and bike facilities, so. But given the nature of topography, given the nature of existing roadways, it's kind of a case by case basis again where that is feasible, but the predominant recommendation would be to extend shoulder lifts. Uh, but we kind of went through this at length with our SAT meetings and you know, there is still a safety factor. Some of these roadways that have fifty mile per hour speed limits, adding that uh, you know, tertiary layer of, layer of a bike facility, even if it was a shoulder, so that could still be a safety concern, so yeah. Kind of a case by case basis, but we have made, I believe, uh, well, we'll get to there, but seven, I think it was seven uh, pedestrian or bike projects in the short term, you know, five, I think additional in the long term, so. And those are kind of piggybacked and associated with um, other road projects, so. I guess our re- our recommendation isn't to necessarily go out and start extending shoulder lifts, but uh, take the opportunity to analyze uh, the addition of a four foot shoulder uh, if and when there's the opportunity to uh, do that in tandem with other uh, road maintenance or construction opportunities.
So just before you move on there, it was a twenty-two foot wide road. So are you thinking that four foot in addition to the twenty-two or?
Correct, so that would just be, that would just be twenty-two, eleven, eleven foot lane, drivelanes with potentially an additional.
Incorporating the four foot shoulders.
Correct, sorry about that. Yeah, that is, I apologize, but yeah, eleven foot drivelanes.
Okay.
The potential of an addition of a four foot shoulder. So because uh, and you can go to the next slide, Bruce, so this is kind of covering some jurisdictional maintenance issues. Other uh, the best of my knowledge, kind of longstanding between the US Forestry Service and the county. There are considerable amount of forest lands with roads that have uh, old agreements that are, present some jurisdictional issues for maintenance, so. I think during the course of the project, I know um, Steve Grable was involved in some of those discussions, but I think the, the fruit of what came out of that is really a, a recommendation to uh, try to hold an annual agency meeting of what forestry service try to determine and come up of a list of roads that have had those uh, kind of maintenance discrepancies between county and, and forest service. And determine roads need research to locate missing right of way or eastbound maintenance agreement documents and so our recommendations that Lawrence County and the USFS uh, prioritize prioritized roads that should have a new road agreement prepared that would supersede older agreements that are no longer applicable.
As a matter of fact, John Bayman with Forest Service yesterday on that very topic, I tagged along to listen, so that's already underway.
Okay, great. Uh, next slide please. Um, so hey, having said that, meeting today, um, prior, one of the priorities was revised Mount Rose Belt Road from a county primary to county secondary system for all other roads. Uh, developed new jurisdiction maintenance documents that would supersede previous documentation. So again, that's the table of county primary and system uh, lane miles. So you can see the primary system, but twenty-seven percent. Whereas the secondary system is about eight percent, but um, the red circle on that map denotes Mount Roseval, so, next slide please. Um, so for project recommendations, there were a total of eighty-six in the short and long form. Breaking that down, there was thirty-five road projects that predominantly come out of the existing five-year plan, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-nine. Intersection projects, there were five new identified, so that came out of the sixteen intersections that were uh, analyzed, started the study. Bridges, uh, there are currently uh, seven that were in the five-year plan, one new identified, eight biking pedestrian projects, and then in the long term, twelve uh, new roadway projects identified. So that'd be twenty, thirty plus into the future years, uh, eleven intersection projects, balance of sixteen intersections. Two additional bridges in the long term that um, or I believe in the, in the process of seeking big grants for funding to complete those post twenty-thirty. And uh, an additional five long-term biking pedestrian projects, so fifty-six in the short term, thirty projects identified. Long-term total will be six, of course, in the next five years and twenty-three plus, thanks Bruce. So again, ten county bridges currently, created in poor condition of those, eight short-range bridge projects are currently in various stages of funding and or construction, a couple have been completed actually during the, the course of the study. And the two additional long-range uh, projects that are currently in the five-year plan. For road projects, uh, thirty-five total, eight potential bike and ped shoulder widening projects. In the long range, twelve total projects, road projects, five potential bike ped shoulder widening projects. Those are lower priority projects, paving to gravel conversions, again based on the four hundred plus eighty-T threshold. And uh, recommendation for continuation of maintenance from the short range, annual maintenance carried forward from those annual funds that uh, go to maintenance every year, next slide please. So road improvement costs were based on uh, those improvement types uh, seen on the screen with a rough order made to cost per mile. So the, in the executive summary in the tables, you'll see there is a column towards the right for total cost estimate that is rough order magnitude, but those cost estimates are based on, at least for the, the road projects, those are based on those cost per mile assumptions, next slide please. So these are the, a list of priority short-term intersection projects, Old Bell Road and Old Highway fourteen. And again, if you refer back to either the full report or the executive summary, um, there are detailed analyses of, of each of these study intersections, so. Won't belabor reading off this list, but this is also uh, found in both documents, next slide please Bruce. Again, pedestrian bicycle, projects eight short-term, five long-term. For freight and aviation, uh, continue to support SDOT improvements along state and these highway systems. Did provide a draft heliport ordinance that is found in appendix B um, for review. Potential consideration for incorporating into ordinance. And also the heightened activity of ATV, UTV usage, also provided a uh, essentially a, a go-by uh, ordinance uh, based on a similar community that's gone through similar issues. But also concurrently, there is a USDOT uh, study, and so recommend uh, recommend once that study is, is complete to uh, look over the findings of that study and it, and use that to help uh, inform any, any county ordinances that would apply to uh, ATV, UTV usage. Oh, sorry, I skipped over transit. That came up a couple times in public engagement meetings. I know that's not the emphasis of the county, but at the same time, um, I think there is uh, some desire from certain citizens, county residents for mobility to and from uh, other metuaries, so just continue to support burial's transit initiatives.
Forest Service will recognize that.
Yep. These are the final project identification maps, so um, just kind of review the key there for you. Yellow and orange circles and triangles, the short-term bridge projects, so ev- ev- all projects are listed on this map, so that key is kind of important. So where you see the, the pink and blue lines, that kind of look like a real brackets on the end, that, that's going to be where you see those, that's in tandem with an identified road project. So that's essentially how that key works, but got a zoom of Spearfish on the right, and the count on the right on the left. And they're numbered in sequence, so um, in the tables list, uh, in your documents, on the far left, you'll see a project number where you see a, not on the bridges, but where you see a uh, VP designation, that would be bike pedestrian project, that's kind of piggybacked with a, with a rotor intersection project. And then finally, um, I can speak to this as existing today, um, we have a federal administration change coming up, so um, not necessarily guarantee that all these funding resources will be available in the future, but generally speaking, most administrations have some version of the raised grant. As well as uh, the majority of these as well, so if they change names, the funding streams may stay the same, but um, for example, uh, SS4A grants are safe streets for all programs, I think those are set to expire in twenty-five. That might be something that the, the county wants to consider in the future, but um, again, um, it's kind of the, the litany of, of grant funding programs that are available today, so. With, with that, I'll conclude my presentation and thank you everyone.
Any questions from the board?
In your follow-up on your studies of these counties that you've done, how many are able to, you've got some pretty rural areas where you're having light for more safety, do they do that?
I would say it's about fifty-fifty, I think it, I think it kind of boils down to what budget is available. Those aren't necessarily most expensive projects, but again, there are funding opportunities that the county could seek to help augment local funds for those, and from a safety standpoint, I do see communities implement those just based on safety factors where you've got more rural intersection that might have a skew, and so. You know, there's options in terms of solar power, connect into the grid, um, but I would say it's, I would say it's about fifty-fifty. I do work for like tribal nations as well, and I kind of see that more often with tribes, but I know that similar I worked on many counties last year, we had similar recommendations and um, those were kind of spearheaded in a couple locations by the county itself, so um, yeah, I would say it's about fifty.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Eight, three, on thirty, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I don't know that um, Ian will be available to be there on the thirty-first, maybe he can appear by a go-to meeting if necessary. If you have any questions, in the meantime, if you want to forward them to me, I'll forward them to him, so he's available to answer them.
And I guess I should say, um, as of not including uh, this week's time that I might be logging to the project, but I think as of last Wednesday, I got a report. We're under budget at ninety-two, ninety-three percent of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget for this project, so if there were any changes, any last-minute requests, uh, you know, take your time over the next few weeks, please review in more detail, and if, if there's any clarifications they need, there, there is budget left to address.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, reviewing the bids. Our consultants did review them, they, they would, uh, they do confirm that Western Communication does meet all the requirements, they are the lowest responsible bidder, so I would recommend that we award this bid to Western Construction.
I think we looked in the sector, we accept a bid from Western. When we put the discussion, seeing them, all of us in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Everything turns around here.
Well, Bruce just left, he had something from the state.
He is running to make a copy of something he just got, or this uh,
All right, well, this.
The FH, FHWA.
There was a document that was sent by uh, Larry Dean with the state DOT that was addressing some uh, urban boundaries in the Spearfish area, um, it, it was uh, goes along with the census, the latest census and things like that, so. Bruce spoke with Larry and he has kind of the report on that, so.
Okay.
I seen the map, that's all I have to offer. I think it was a little bit of a surprise, and Jumea with the city, she didn't, this is the first they really seen of it too, so. I think it requires signatures by the county and by the city, so I'm not sure how this is going to play out.
One letter here is addressed to Mayor Sudden.
Right, and that's the only letter that was addressed to the city, and, but it does require county uh, county signature on it as well, so it, it's, it handles the urban boundaries of the city of Spearfish, which there are some county roads in there, so.
There's probably some of those areas that the city and the county don't agree who takes care of what.
I'm sure of that, I'm sure there's going to be that in there as well. I think Bruce forgot he was going to bring this up.
Yeah, probably did, he got along fine.
Amber said he's printing.
He said he was printing something, so.
This continues to sit here and smile.
Yes, it's part of this, it's part of this urban boundary.
Yeah.
Amber, I might ask you something, do you have a uh, a copy of the, the lady that did the ma- maps, Deadwood and Spearfish, do you have a copy of comments or made? They had stickers on there.
Yeah, they're in an Excel spreadsheet, we transferred them all to an Excel spreadsheet, so we have them all together.
Can we see that?
Well, we, not today, no, but we can, if you want to look at them.
Yeah.
Or you can stop up in the office and I can show it to you.
All right.
Yeah, we put them all in a spreadsheet, because the stickies, you know, I didn't want them to disappear, the comments.
No.
So we just transferred them all into a, like, so they're, what meeting they were made at, their calls.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I can email it.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good, good idea to know what they had to say.
Well, we're going to give an update today, it might change your discussion, I'll give you an update when I talk about stuff of what kind of was talked about at E and Z.
Great.
Yep.
We're missing some of our own cases.
Hot off the press.
Hot off the press. Thank.
So your consideration today is the Spearfish urban boundary map, the Federal Highway Urban Boundary Map. This has been a project that Larry Dean, I think with SDOT, has been working on, I think it's changed a little bit. Has been working on, and I think it's due, it's coming to its finality here by the end of the year. So originally, uh, Larry, since last year, go back, I think after following the, the last census, then Federal Highway goes and, and calculates using some metrics, the urban boundary of areas, and I think it's only urban areas with a population more than five thousand, so that would include the city of Spearfish, uh, obviously in, in this area. And so Larry went ahead and, and created an, an additional map, and I have that here. But then as part of the process, the city of Spearfish has input as well, and so what you've just been presented with is the final result of, of the area that they proposed, and I think have approved as of last night, as their urban area. And so I think that additional area that Spearfish added would include areas that have previously been annexed and or anticipated growth areas. And so I think it has evolved somewhat since the last version that you saw. Your concurrence, your approval is required as, as part of this scenario, and I think that the import here is, is boils down to federal funding, as I understand, that that area in the urban area is eligible for, for, uh, for federal funding or grants. So there's no obligation, I think on the county's part, you're not transferring jurisdiction or anything of the sort. It's sort of a perfunctory matter that the state is going through to comply with federal highway rules, if that makes sense, right? And so I, I think that's what I know, and so I would be ultimately looking for authorization to have the chairman sign, probably not this little miniature version, but I think I would probably get uh, an updated version, which is going to be something similar to, you know, a full-size, a full-size map that would reflect the city's changes as well, makes sense, everybody?
Who, who had a fan, uh, where the light colored is, whether that's uh, actually county or city land.
I think the white color is the city limits.
Yeah, I, I can have that one in front of you, Richard, so I, I think, um, yeah, I think if you look at the, I call it, is it pink? I don't know what color that is. I think that reflects city, city limits, and then you see the additional colored areas that reflect, again, I think either areas that have been annexed and or what Spearfish anticipates to be growth areas. Reasonably in the, in the foreseeable future.
So the county and the city didn't agree on the, uh, have, each have a, a say on the areas.
So you're being presented with it today, sort of for the first time, Spearfish just adopted their version of it last night. And so, and that's why I just got it now to reflect that. And so again, you're, yeah, you're not, you're not changing jurisdiction, road responsibilities, giving up zoning subdivision or anything like that. Again, I think it's just areas that are going to be eligible in the future for federal highway grants and programs.
Because I know that uh, this area up here, this pink area, I don't remember, uh, okay on that.
So I think that pinky area is actually area that's been annexed by the city out to exit seventeen, um, they actually have annexed that area.
City limits.
Yeah, city limits.
That is city limits.
Yeah.
Here. Is that? Yeah, they're showing that.
The city annexed the land, uh, that was along the, the roadway here.
And the airport.
But they brought in the airport, they brought in some peace property up here, brought in the Sunus Elkhorn subdivision, all that is, is city limits. Already.
Yeah. So, Richard, city limits has for probably at least fifteen or so years gone past exit seventeen to the east to this, that area around the golf course and so forth, yeah.
I was thinking about the area to the north of highway, uh, in the interstate, the interstate.
All the airports in here. Yeah, it, it's all been, it's have all been brought in.
So, so you brought this all in here?
Yes.
That's the airport?
Well, this is the airport, this is Utky stuff, this is the Elkhorn Golf Course and all the subdivision that are building there, all that's already in.
And so, and Richard, I would distinguish them, I think Amber and Bob were talking about this, so this is separate from, you've heard discussions about the three-mile area, which is Spearfish's statutory planning jurisdiction, then there's the joint powers area where the city and the county, I think you have an agreement um, regarding building inspection and, and the plane, and so those are separate things from this, it's kind of hard to keep it all kind of separate.
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah, it's a mess.
And I should add that, 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 that Amber and the city staff have been working on an updated drafts of those maps that I anticipate are going to compress those areas down quite a bit, and I don't know if it's going to actually match in any regard what you see here, but the areas that you've seen in the past, I think are going to, are going to narrow down. Uh, I think the city has looked at areas that they can reasonably annex, reasonably surface, and, and so now as part of those discussions, you'll see updated information, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is quite a bit less, so this, this map here, we're just looking at it, it's not even, I mean, it's not even close to like Fender Road, you know, like, if you come down that far, this is way less than that for that one. But that's just federal, that doesn't really change any of our stuff at all.
Bruce, is the map that the chairman is supposed to sign, is, do you have the one that the city has signed?
No. I have, I have the version.
Do you have that? It was approved last night, so we'll have a printed version available for you all in the next week.
What I just passed out, I think, would reflect the discussions at the city last night as approved, right? And so I, I haven't, I just got, so I was able to compare the most recent version that I have, but I, I think it's, it looks like it's, it's changed me a little bit from what, from version number two. This is version one, there was version two, and I guess it's version three, makes sense?
You need action on this today.
Yes, I would have.
Probably should wait and see the map as it was approved, yes.
Yeah, that's.
And so I think that time is of the essence of this, I know it's not, you were concerned, my, my recollection is, is that this has to be done by five to thirty-first, I think, prior to your next meeting, and so um, I think it's the federal deadline.
Explain me the harm on this to, to approve this, somebody help me.
Again, as far as I understand, I try to do my own independent research, I talked to Larry Dean for probably twenty minutes, half an hour about this. It is going to do with the city's eligibility for federal funding and federal programming, it's not jurisdictionally related, zoning, subdivision, anything of the sort, I can't identify any, any reason why you wouldn't. You might ask why you need to sign it, well, I think the federal law requires your concurrence. As a, as a, as a planning partner with the city.
So it's not affecting the county, it's just affecting the city, as far as, as applications for funds.
There's no reason not to cooperate.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, so we have this version, and, and I would ask Amber to help me, when we get the official version to be signed, we can compare it with that to make sure that what you're seeing today is, was reflected on the official version as well.
I have no concern with it. Because it doesn't affect, like, I won't even submit any applications that are dealing with federal funding anyways, that's there.
Well, I, I don't want to sign something that just the city is okaying, not the county too, and, and I think part of this has been done by one entity over the other. Uh, in fact, I know on the highway, private, we didn't go quarter, quarter of a mile out to city, presented that to us.
The city limits is that pink area that you see, that's current city limits.
I know it is. Pink and yellow.
But it, we didn't have anything to say about some, some of those pink areas there.
They annexed, though.
It's already been done, Richard, it's, it's, they're eight years old.
I'll, I'll move to let the, the chairman, or to authorize the chairman to sign the map, uh, as long as it aligns with what we're looking at here, as long as the city map from last night aligns with, with what we're looking at.
Jim, we got a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion will sound opposed.
Aye.
Thank you. Do you mind if you help me get that map, or let me know, please, thank you. So I think I guess concluded all the highway business.
Yeah, I'm, I've had enough.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Chairman, on the agenda, I think we're at nine o'clock, and this is the time to place, set to hear from Ms. Nicole Robek and/or Kara Graevan regarding opioid settlement funds, previously, as you recall, you've allocated some funds to Compass Point Services in Spearfish, Lawrence County's dangerous area, a couple of new applicants. Are you on, or Kara?
I'm Kara.
Kara, Kara, welcome to the show.
All right. Thank you for having me today, um, I do have a, and everyone has a copy of it, it looks like in your books, I apologize for the tardiness in that. Um, I have been the executive director of Action for the Betterment of Our Community since two thousand and four. Um, we started first and foremost as a community-based coalition, we have morphed into now a treatment provider who does prevention intervention outpatient and clinically managed services for adolescents in your school districts, and then also adults in your communities that reside here. So I'd like to draw your attention, I just have a little bit of information to present to you. So although opiates are the new kind of hot-button issue, they have not necessarily hit South Dakota like we expect them to do. What we need to be aware of, though, is that Midwest HIDA finally categorized opiates as the next trend drug that's going to take the number one spot in the next five to ten years. Um, the last ten years, we've seen a huge influx with methamphetamine, that is a lot of the response that we have with law enforcement, treatment issues, admissions to treatment, mental health committals, we expect to see the same related to opiate use in the next five to ten years. As you've noticed, and I'm not going to read through a lot of this data, but South Dakota is still kind of behind a lot of the other states around us, but we are kind of at that cusp where we're going to start to see some issues. So it's the fifth leading cause of death among individuals aged ten to nineteen, third leading death for twenty to twenty-nine, fourth leading cause of death for individuals aged thirty to thirty-nine. The part that I'd like you to pay the most attention to is when we collected data for the state of South Dakota and as a local provider, what we're seeing is that forty-one percent of the overdoses, there was a potential bystander there. What that means is there was a cause for an intervention or someone that could have called law enforcement to hopefully negate the overdose. On the next slide, what we've been able to compose is information specific to Lawrence County. And so this little pretty graph that we have on this one, these numbers are only the overdoses related to the county that you guys oversee, so there were a these numbers are only the overdoses related to the county that you guys oversee. So there were a hundred and fifteen overdoses in Lawrence County. What we want to pay most attention to is that you did have one fatal death that occurred out of the hundred and fifteen overdoses. What we hope to address is kind of education in the communities, looking at overdose kits, different opportunities for members who maybe don't understand why it's important to dispose of their prescription medication. What we're seeing is a lack of awareness in adolescents also that view prescription drugs as harmful. So we have about twelve to fifteen percent of the students that we survey in your community that indicate that prescription drugs aren't necessarily harmful. They view methamphetamine, other substances as more harmful without the understanding that these things can lead to those opportunities and options. This little pin map is probably the coolest partnership that we have been able to work with in the last five years. So this is the Lawrence County pin map for two thousand and twenty-four. This gives you every overdose, suspected overdose, naloxone administration, and where your fatality was. I am more than willing, if you like, just this slide, you can zoom in so that you can identify the actual location where it happened. So you can see the street, you can see the community, you can see where those identified, we call them hotspots, in your areas might be. So some of the services that ABC currently provides in Lawrence County is we work in the Spirit Fish and Lee Deadwood School District. We provide education in both of those communities. We also provide diversion-based services in a partnership with your Northern Hills Diversion Program. We are their approved treatment provider. We also provide space in Sturgis for them at our building that we have behind the hill climb there. Currently to date, we've worked with forty-eight clients from Lawrence County who were diagnosed with an opiate use disorder. Hundred and twenty-four of them in the last two years. And to date, ABC's worked with two hundred and thirteen clients who call Lawrence County home. I want to put on your radar, we only expanded to working with adults in the last three years. So the majority of these two hundred and thirteen are youth that live in your community with their families. Some of the outpatient programming that we provide is we have early recovery skill services in our two locations, which are Sturgis and Belfush. We provide case management services, peer support programming. We have two licensed credentialed QMHPs on staff that help us. And we also provide family and marital programming. And so when we look at the expansion and what we're noticing, people go to treatment for twenty-eight days and they go right back into the same community, the same home, the same family that they left. What ABC tries to promote through its case management and its peer support is a change to that or an alternative. Giving a little more wraparound services that aren't necessarily provider-based, but more peer-to-peer based. So taking them to extra meetings, helping them do their laundry, helping them fill out SNAP applications, helping them get housing, different options and opportunities that we normally don't see service providers do. And then finally, I do want to touch on, we are the managing operation for New Dawn Center or New Dawn Enterprises. It is a twenty-four bed halfway house in Vail, South Dakota that serves twenty-four men at a time. Our program is a minimum of ninety days. We have taken over that management and operation the end of two thousand and nineteen. We have seventy-two males who stayed for an average of fifty-three days. What I want to try your attention to is sixty-three percent of clients that are referred to New Dawn complete that program successfully and relocate back to their own home or a facility that is comparable to starting anew. One of the criteria to be at New Dawn is a home life that is not supportive to recovery. So they could be transitioning from the South Dakota State Penitentiary. They could be transitioning from foster care into our program at eighteen years old. They could also be looking at where we transition them to an elderly assisted living home as well. Future looks bright for New Dawn. We currently employ nineteen staff. ABC itself employs twenty-eight staff currently. We will be building a new facility out at New Dawn, and we have the first recovery community in the state of South Dakota. So if you're familiar with the hill climb in Sturgis, we have the property behind there that used to be the Corbon Law Enforcement Training Facility. Or those of us that have been here a long time, there was a vet clinic back behind there. And so we have a halfway house that now has seven men who have graduated our program. And we plotted the first two, the second two of our tiny homes of the six will be plotted this weekend. They live there, they attend treatment there, they work in the community, and we're seeing two-plus years of recovery at this point with people that follow our program. I kind of just wanted to come and put us on your radar. I didn't necessarily provide an actual request for funding, but I was willing to entertain any questions that you might have and provide any answers if.
Just a couple of questions, just quickly, and you probably don't have this data, just an estimate of what would be the average age of people standing there.
So what we have right now, our youngest is nineteen, our oldest is sixty-three. We can absolutely provide you that data. I have all of that data. We have counties they come from, the diagnosis they have, how long they stay. We can break it down to even the little bit of things as to what county they came from.
Okay. And then, say sixty-three percent of the clients completed successfully, how do you define success?
So we define success by meeting their treatment planning goals, which means they have to not only work with being stable when they come there, they have to have stable mental health, they have to make sure they are taking their medication. The majority of the clients we see do have co-occurrences. They have mental health and substance use disorders onboard. And so as they progress through that program, they have to make sure they don't have write-ups. We have a pretty structured environment out there. They have to make sure that they're maintaining their side of the living quarters. They have to also progress therapeutically and also in the community and have a plan that's going to set them up for recovery. So if they say to us, you know, hey, I'm leaving, and just because it's day ninety, that is considered a neutral discharge. It doesn't mean they successfully complete because there are six dimensions they have to meet criteria.
And are you able to follow up with them after they leave the facility too?
Yep, we absolutely follow up six months and a year after discharge. We do.
And do you have, do you know how many of them are still successful at that point?
I would say those of them that answer their phones, have the same phone number when they leave or have the same address that they gave us when they leave, those that we're able to stay in connection with and stay in our outpatient or aftercare services, I would say about seventy percent do very well. You know, we need to look at the reality of what opiates do and methamphetamine. You need eighteen months of consistent services before your brain starts to change back to where it was before.
So seventy-two percent of the ones that haven't dropped off, how many of them drop off?
I would say probably thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, yep. We try the best we can. Those that relocate to our communities, we have a much better pulse on than those that relocate back to Minnehaha, even Rapid City, just because we don't provide program in those communities. So as much as we try to follow up, if they never showed up at the doorstep of that other provider, we can't continue to collect that information.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Chairman, regarding Ms. Robek, I just got a message from her. There was a possibility that she'd be unable to attend. I think she was out of state and got, had a late flight last night after midnight, so would probably reschedule work for a later time. So just here.
All right.
May I?
Yes, you may.
May I, Mr. Chairman? You want me to sit? Okay. I, in all candor, I am on the Compass Point Board of Directors. So I, I certainly work closely with that organization. But this woman and this organization, I would say, I, I just want you all to know how much this organization does for our community, my clients, our clients, the people who are in our criminal justice system is amazing. I mean, right now I have three men, one who has successfully completed the program and is now working at the facility, which is a first for me in all of my years. He's doing, done amazing. We have one that's on a furlough out of our jail and has been there for a substantial period of time, and it looks like he'll be out of our jail for potentially another ninety days or so, which is huge, just to get them out of our jail on a furlough, getting the treatment they need so that once their case is resolved, they can be on the path to a sober living environment. And then another gentleman who is graduating tomorrow, Thursday. I, we use this program as do my colleagues in the criminal justice community a lot, and it is invaluable, in my opinion. And what's most invaluable is their, their after-programming services that they offer. And so I just wanted to say that on their behalf. It's a phenomenal program, and I rave about it all the time. And so any support that we as a, as a county could give them would be amazing at any point and well-used and well-deserved. So I just wanted to say that. Yes.
Well, your questions are involved. All right.
Thank you.
Chairman, if you have a brief, kind of, reschedule, we'll take a five-minute break so you can read books for the next. Someone turn the microphone off again, so we'll take a bit of a break.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yep.
It'll be fine. Just have two recordings. It's not a big deal. I've done it before for planning and zoning. It's okay.
Okay. You have it for.
All right. I think. So this is just a plat for ninety-nine. So this is just a replat. They are taking three lots and combining them into two. There's an existing house up here on two, and then now we have this. We're kind of doing a lot line change and combine lots all in one because two different owners are going to. That's it. I don't have anything else.
It needs to be exempt, is that correct?
No, it does not need to be exempt. We, we looked at this because overall it already had a fire plan. We don't need to go backwards.
Whatever we're doing.
Just a final.
This is a final, I'll move to approve the final plat.
Second. Jim, we have a motion in a second to approve the final. Any further discussion? Fellas in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is one of four. This one was, a motion was made at the planning and zoning meeting to approve this one. And what it is, is they're basically doing a lot line change. In, in some context, this little revised lot two, it's one point three four zero acres, is going to end up getting sold to the guy that owns block nine. So he owns one whole big block. But in order to sell it, they needed to create a lot. So that's what they're doing. So this common area revised lot two is going to get combined with block nine. And then this is their existing treatment plan.
Without any mention of access, then we have.
Yeah, we are not. So, so you can see there's a forty-foot public access easement all the way. So. Yeah, we, we are not. So, so you can see there's a forty-foot public access easement all the way. So.
Is the planning and plating in with that adjacent?
I don't know if they're gonna actually platter it in with it, but they could.
Then we need to make sure to keep record of the additional lot that they're creating.
Yes. That's why, that's why I made them platted out as an actual lot. Because then at least I can show that this lot exists if they don't ever platter it in. And it does, we made sure that it met the requirements of, you know, one acre more has access. So if they ever came back in and decided to do something else, well, but it would just be a lot. A record, just taking it off their inventory, just like anything else.
Fire plan's already in place, so we see the motion on preliminary and the final.
Preliminary and the final. It did end up getting approved of in the zoning.
I'm just not sure how to word that. The one, oh, well. Does it touch, does that access on the north? On the, on the west side? What is that little other side over?
There's an easement across.
There's an easement over on this side.
Okay, and that goes to the corner of it.
Yep, it's right up the corner and then this comes over. See, there's also a forty-foot driveway easement right in here that goes along.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the preliminary and the final. Any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prepared?
All right. Next, Adam. I think Adam is on there first, isn't he?
He is.
Okay, so Adam is here. Um, Adam had talked to us. This is Adam Altergat. I think most of you guys know.
Hello.
No, and but, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had, Adam and I had talked back and forth and he has never officially been added to the fire plan list. But we know him as contractor. He's been out there doing work for a lot of different people, but never been added to actually write plans before. Um, so we kind of went through and he provided all of the information to provide the requirements and all of that stuff. And so really all we're looking for, like we've done in the past, we've come to you, make sure you're comfortable with it. And if you are, we would add Adam to be able to actually write plans. Which is good because we're back down with, I think Rob is the only one writing plans.
And talking with Rob Maddox, if I can speak freely.
Yep.
I, I had no clue there was an actual formal list. I apologize for that. I'm just that darn busy. So, um, but yeah. I can answer any questions about myself, business, anything that.
I think, I'm not gonna say, I think the, the list is just to make it easier for people. We have historically have a list of people that do seven systems and people that do wells, those kind of things. But anybody that has the credentials can write it. This way it'll be, it'll be provided to.
You guys actually have to approve the person writing. That's in our ordinance. So then that's all. We're just making it formal that we can add him to the approved list.
Yes.
Second.
Yes, we have a motion in a second to add Adam to our list. Thank you for, for coming forward and, and for helping us for many years.
You bet.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prepared?
That's all we needed.
Okay, I will leave you. Those are six, seven of you? Seven of you? I'll leave these here for you. I'm a rural fire protection district up in Spearfish. We went ahead and, and are trying to promote, you know, safety and awareness and appropriate stewardship of, of our lands and such like that. So. Look.
Do you have some of those too? Were you gonna leave some to put out in the public?
Yes, yeah.
If you have more of them, we can just put them, you can throw them up in the office or even just here in the auditor's office and we can put them out.
Mm-hmm. Great. That'd be awesome.
All right, thank you. All right. Nice. Oh, um, so the fee schedule, you guys are gonna be getting a new fee schedule, what, in January? You're gonna do that one, right? For, for planning and zoning? This is just gonna be added to that. I wanted you to see him so you kind of know what's going on. Um, we are creating new signage. So if you remember, when the state law changed, I don't know, it's probably been four years ago or so, we had to go, they, the state law states you have to have an eighteen by twenty-four, you know, sign for any sort of thing. We have white metal signs. They have caused a lot of drama, we'll say. They're constantly breaking off the poles and just, it, it's become kind of a nightmare for maintenance. The maintenance guys are having to, you know, buy new poles, buy new screws. They break out. It's, it's just kind of an ongoing. Um, so Pennington County and I think the city of Spearfish now, I don't know if they have theirs out yet, but we're all kind of going to more of these throwaway, kind of like the political signs or the, um, you know, the real estate signs that you can, the kind of corrugated, not real narrow, but plastic type stuff. These'll be the new ones. We're color coding them. What we find a lot is, yeah, the words were on there, but when people are driving by, they couldn't know what the word said. So now they can call us and say, well, I don't know, I saw a yellow sign. So at least we'll know what they're talking about because usually we don't know which one. You know, so this we thought would help with that aspect of it. The same information is on the signs. We made it a little clearer, updated the, um, updated the logo because it still had the old crest logo on it that we haven't used for quite a few years. So we just updated, um, this meets all the state requirements. They'll be eighteen by twenty-four throwaway. We aren't gonna request them back. We're not gonna have to deal with the deposit and then have to turn around and write a check, which is costing the county money because we're constantly writing those checks.
Plastic or what are they?
They're like a plastic e.
They're the political, right?
Kind, they're like a political sign, like the, kind of thicker. We did the wire that, um, they have a heavy duty-er wire, so it's not just the real narrow wire. We did do the heavy duty. With this, we are, under the new fee schedule, you're gonna see it soon, what in January, we're gonna, we'll be removing that hundred dollar fee. So the question I had is we need one of two things. I'm not gonna lie, it cost me twelve hundred bucks for like four hundred signs. And that's gonna last me hopefully a long time. But, but it was very, not that expensive. And that was for all of them. So we have, I think, a hundred of each type. I would like to maybe, I mean, if you want me to charge, I think the cost was twenty, what did we decide? Planning and zoning, twenty-five? Or fifty? I think it was fifty. We can do that and just absorb that into the existing fees or I can increase the existing fees to cover that. I, I can go either way. I just, it doesn't matter to me. I just think from the auditor's standpoint, or not the auditor, well, kind of a little bit of the auditor's and the treasurer's office, it's kind of a hassle dealing with the hundred dollars in and then, you know, three months later, we write a hundred dollar check out. That's kind of a.
Didn't we recommend this fee of planning and zoning?
We did, but it doesn't say how much. It says to, it's thought it best to adjust the fees to meet the new signage cost.
Yeah, and we, so we didn't set it because when I got, I didn't have the bid yet at planning and zoning. So I can tell you it's gonna cost me twelve hundred dollars.
Thirty bucks a piece.
So I think we can make it reasonable. It's just if you want me to eat that cost as part of our existing fees or you want me to increase the fees to adjust it for that. That's all I need to know. So that I can update the fee schedule for January. It, it doesn't matter, but.
So it was twelve hundred dollars for four hundred signs? Three bucks a sign?
Three bucks a sign. You're right.
And the stand?
Yeah, the stands are included in there.
Really?
Seems pretty dark cheap.
That's three dollars. About thirty.
You're right.
I, I know. Thirty is what.
Always.
Do you want, I mean, usually we try to, because I'm still gonna have to replace them over time and, you know, so we were trying to be reasonable. A hundred, I wasn't comfortable leaving it at a hundred because that's a lot for something that didn't cost us. So it's just a matter of if you want me to have a sign fee at all or just absorb the fees and, I mean, our, you know, our application fees are anywhere from three fifty to four hundred dollars right now. I can tell you notifications are getting more, you know, that's what comes covering is our notification costs, which is constantly, you know, putting it in the paper. That's getting more and more expensive.
Well, charged for fifteen, twenty bucks a sign would be online.
Okay, so I'll just adjust.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay, so I will, I will update this fee schedule then to adjust the fees.
Uh, we probably don't need a motion now. We're just gonna do, include this with the fees next year.
Yeah, we'll just include it in the January, but we wanted to make sure it was updated.
Is anyone comfortable with twenty?
Then we're gonna have to mess with it as those fees go up because they will. And then you're gonna run out of one color.
Then it's gonna cost more.
So it's gonna cost more. Yeah.
So that's fair enough. Okay, I'll just adjust. So you guys will see the full fee schedule in January then. But we will be removing that hundred dollar sign fee and then we won't have the deposit thing. We won't have to deal with that anymore, which will, I know treasurer's office will like that. Okay? Up there on those.
Um. To C P one eighty-five, H and S, and.
Nope, not yet.
Don't try to check this?
Not yet. Not done yet.
Joint Powers.
Update. Future land use map. Yep. Future land use map. Okay, so this is, um, I did include the minutes in here so you could read through this. There were lots of discussion. Um, there has been work sessions the last twenty minutes of planning and zoning. We've gotten really far on things. We had some really good conversations back and forth. And at the last planning and zoning meeting, because we have now surpassed our contract with S E group, so we're out of contract now. We've utilized the ten thousand dollars that we had budgeted. But there's still a lot of discussion. And so at this point, the future land use map had, the, the group has made a suggestion that we just don't, don't adopt anything right now. Keep working on it. They'd like to keep having some work sessions and keep, you know, having discussions and, and keep going forward. They would like to continue that. And then as that happens, um, this is where we're kind of to the point of budgets. I don't have any more money available to be able to continue putting into this because we didn't budget for it. So that's a discussion you guys get to have as you are, you know, looking at budgets for next year or how you want me to go about it. But the board wasn't comfortable with making a recommendation one way or another, but they wanted to keep working on it. That's, that's really what it came down to.
And, and part of our discussion was, uh, what do we want out of this thing? And Emmer suggested, this act as if we're writing a request for proposal and, and tell them what we want out of the thing. We're not doing that, but just another way to look at it. And that, yeah, and then also they just, we've looked at from different, many different angles and figured out we're nowhere from near close, ready to put it out to public.
Yeah, there's work to be done, but there's also, um, how do we present this to the public? So there's not the confusion of it being a zoning map versus a future land use.
Exactly.
So we, we need to work on that aspect of it.
You need a budget for.
Yeah.
Ads and, or information.
Well, I.
Mapping you.
My suggestion was if you really want to go forward with it, just like Spearfish did when we kind of went in with that on this, you know, their budget was like seventy thousand dollars to do their portion of it. Ours was only ten and we did get a lot of information. We, so we have all of that. We have all the data. We have all the meeting stuff. Like we did do a lot of work. And we have it all and it's our information. So.
That's our stuff.
Yeah. That's the hard stuff to get. So now it's the next step, kind of. But I do think this would be better off having a consultant help with it versus having staff do it. I, I really do. Um, I think you need an outside source to be at the meetings. I do think you need it to be in a little bit different format, but that's where we were going with it is maybe we need to take a step back, do an R F P and actually hire a consultant to do what we want, not, not doing it with Spearfish, but doing a separate, you know, separated out. And that's okay to do. It's just I wasn't planning on it for this budget cycle. So I need to know where you're at with it. We can continue to do work sessions, which is I think kind of what I heard with planning and zoning is continue to work on it. And then we either wait till the twenty twenty-six budget and budget, you know, something for that. Or do you guys have enough money that you want me to look at some stuff for twenty twenty-five? I don't know. That's where we're at, I think, was the question. But the P and Z board doesn't wanna not continue to work on it because they're still having discussions. There's lots of, I mean, it's been really good discussions.
What are you thinking about for outside sources?
I, I, I'd have to look and see what's available. I don't even know.
Black calls council is this kind of thing locally, but I don't know who else or the other, all kinds of other stuffs.
They won't work on it.
Can we think of this at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted you to know where it's at because that's kind of what P and Z said is the P and Z board and the work session said, hey, we think we need to slow down and then let's go ahead and go forward with it. Also, as part of that, because we're having this, um, that's the next thing on the agenda, is the joint powers area and the three mile area. Spearfish and I have been working on this for quite a few months now. And we, I think, I got an email from Kevin. Did you guys have a meeting Monday night? Must've been Monday night.
I don't know. We have one tonight, this afternoon.
Well, the city council must've, they must've had one. Is that what it was? So the city council, um, did look at our proposed changes to the, um, kind of combining the three mile and the one mile sort of joint powers area. And we, this is what they looked at. Uh, this is the update. So this is different than what you guys saw on Thursday because Spearfish did have one update, which I was comfortable with. They. Yeah, I just gotta look here, right here. This area, this was updated. Um, so comparative to the map you guys saw the last time, this area was not in there. This is the, we'll say the Alonza and that Trace Crosses property, like that area. So what this is gonna do, which will help us when it comes to the future land use map, that's why we felt like this is better to get the three mile slash one mile updated first. The yellow is going to be the new, we'll say the new boundary for the three mile plating jurisdiction and the joint powers. We're gonna make them match so we don't have two different boundaries, which will help a lot of the confusion. The green area was the old three mile, so the plating jurisdiction, that was the green area that you see here. That's all getting removed. It will no longer be in their plating jurisdiction. The red area is the, I have to make sure I say this right. Yeah. So the red area is just showing where the old joint powers agreement was. Does that make, so you, so green and red is the old joint powers agreement and the old three mile plating jurisdiction. Okay, the yellow would be the new proposal for the three mile plating jurisdiction and the joint powers.
So the building permits and those are not outside of those areas.
A lot is coming out.
Yes.
Yeah, it needs change.
Yep, so a lot of
Should make you happy.
So the green and red would be getting removed altogether. We would no ever have any joint jurisdiction in those areas. It would just go back to town.
Came in for today is in that area that we should have taken care of.
Yes.
If it was, if it had been approved before then, then yes.
Yep, yep.
All right.
So this would, I think, clean up a lot of the back and forth. Not really sure where we're going and what we're doing. I think this will help tremendously. So the city of Spearfish City Council did accept this map. The only change between what you guys finding and zoning saw on Thursday is this block right here.
Which makes sense.
Which I wanted in originally. The city said no, but then the city looked at it and said, what maybe we do.
Except that western part of the San Onofre just don't seem that.
Correct.
There's, yeah, it's a little Steinmeyer and
Yes.
So is the line now between Trace Cross and Steinmeyer's?
Yes.
Okay.
So all, it's literally just, this was all in right here. But this, this little square was out, but then they looked at it and said, no, they
That looks more like the road going back to the place. The old attorney's place.
So this I just got, Brett just updated this last night based on Monday night's discussion.
It's right at that corner. That's what that looks like.
This is not online yet because I just
Oh, really? So Steinmeyer's is in that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's the update. So I think the question was, because I didn't have this on there as a
Like action item.
Action item, but I wanted you to know about it. Now, the other piece of this that we don't have yet is the written agreement. That's what we're working on. Um, Spearfish's attorneys have it right now. They're making their recommendation changes and then it'll come to Bruce as soon as we get it from them. And that'll be the written of like who's going to do building permits, like that's the normal agreement we've always had. So that will be changed too. That we're making edits to that as to, as well. Okay.
So this entire Steinmeyer property is now in, inside the one.
I don't know if it's a whole thing, because I don't know what's really, I mean, it's not all Steinmeyer anymore. It's been sold.
Well, no, that goes up over the hill, doesn't it? Steinmeyer.
It's Steinmeyer's, not very far.
Oh, does it? Well, that's probably all in.
It might, yeah. I don't know exactly where the boundary is on that backside there. Okay.
So the city of Spearfish will have control over the plating of, of that hayfield that we just denied last year. That's
They had it, they had it anyways. It was in their three mile.
Change the zoning, okay.
They're actually kind of pushing out ones that put lots and little lots in there.
Yep.
They are.
Yeah.
There was an area between Steinmeyer's and the existing property that, uh, wasn't zoned anything.
It was zoned ag.
So zoned ag.
It's all zoned ag, still is.
Separate ownership. There were like four or five.
Yeah, it was, yeah, separate ownership. Steinmeyer was separate than that. And we, we, I think we decided to leave Steinmeyer's in there on their own instead of having with somebody else so they could only be agriculture one or forty.
There's still ag. The zoning has not changed. Zoning is the same. Has not changed. That's, that's pretty much it on all of that. Yeah.
You ready to go on to the next?
Sure. Yep. Do you have anything in here first?
There's no need to.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you.
No. Um, Jeff's gonna start. Am I okay? Try again.
Go, come on up.
I believe.
He's on there, yep.
Mr. Rizzi's on.
Morning. Um, reason that we're here is on, one of the reasons we're here, let me rephrase that. On December fourth, I've received a request from from the hall pit to do some winter crushing. The state DOT is asking to crush thirty to thirty-five thousand ton for the South Rockford Road project. The current conditions do not say anything that they can or it doesn't say that they can't. I, our office did some research and what we found was on the original request, it's in your packet, it was discussed about winter crushing. Nothing was decided. It was never put in as a yes or a no. It was just, they talked about it and that's why that is in there to show you uh, that it was discussed. So the first question to you is, is to clarify whether winter crushing is allowed.
No, I can't make any motions, but I don't know why we would limit any of these operations to a specific time of the year. I mean, it's just like this gentleman, obviously he's got a request for an amount of gravel that they plan on using in the spring. So obviously we would want to take care of it this winter. I don't know what difference the time of year makes for an operation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, just to highlight, I think Dalton has submitted a dust control plan as well, but that's also part of your consideration if that is in fact a factor for the winter crushing and/or the operation going forward. It seems to me like there is one C P that we have where, where there's discussion of winter crushing.
And then all it says is minimal or none, but that's the only one that says anything.
But I, and that is that I don't know that anybody has ever asked for winter crushing or such that you've ever limited it. Um, I, I don't think you ever have. And so I think what Jeff has pointed out, that winter crushing was discussed as part of the original C P back in the early nineties.
And we've also submitted you guys, um, the original conditions with some, um, some adjustments to make it up to date for our inspections and, and for it to meet our ordinance. And also we've, an updated or newer version of conditions that kind of match what we've been doing lately. Uh, for you guys to consider whether you want to change over to the newer conditions or, uh, to keep the older conditions with those few adjustments. So that's where it sits.
Mr. Hall, I'm gonna allow you some time to explain what you have in mind for dust.
Sure. I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of ambiguous for a reason, you know, because it's like, well, if we believe that there's not that much dust and the state says that there's not that much dust, and M Shaw says that we're okay, then we're still happy to put some water on, on whatever needs to be watered, you know, but I mean, also, we feel like there also should be kind of a, a line to where, okay, obviously we're doing everything that we can. Now what, you know, um, I'll say that we are moving forward. We are, we will be trying to do the best that we can moving forward, you know, um, we're setting up a water truck this winter. So come dust season, we will be ready to go for that. We're planning on doing all of the roads, roadways, so we'll keep the trucks on a, a very, very understandable path for them. Keep the, keep the speed down. So we, we believe from the other pits that I've talked to and people in general that I've talked to, they say that this, this should really help with the dust in the creation of dust in the pit. So, um, I've asked, I've asked a couple of different places, I guess, our pits, if we should water the piles. They say that that doesn't really make any sense to do that. Um, just because it's don't, the water would only, only penetrate a couple inches at the most or a foot, even say at the very most. So by the time you put one bucket of gravel, you know, it's, it's gone, you know, so unless we stand out there all day watering one specific part of the pile, then it doesn't make sense. Need be, we can try it, see how it works and kind of go from there, but, but we're kind of saying that we're gonna keep the roads under control and the process areas under control. I just said process areas because I figured where, where we're crushing the material, where we're, um, loading the trucks and where we're scaling the trucks. I felt like that was kind of a
Mr. Chairman, I think, um, since, uh, Mr. Rizzi's original complaint came in, um, I think, uh, what the halls have done is they moved their piles, their stockpiles back away from the road. Uh, they also put the rock down, established a boundary between the road edge, uh, also establishing an entry and exit point. And I think, I'm just kind of recapping all this and your intent going forward then is to have all the loading of trucks take place on your property proper.
Absolutely.
Whereas in the past, I think it was done on the roadway.
Well, there was kind of, this was kind of a weird year. So how, how, uh, uh, the blast was shot this year, it pushed the material, not, not, not towards the county road by any means, but towards the center of the pit instead of yeah, I guess it would make less sense, I guess, but, but so how, how, there was no other place for him to go. But moving forward, we'll make sure that that never happens again. It'll, all the staging will be in the pit. There will be no trucks sitting on the roads waiting to get loaded, nothing, nothing like that.
I think in the past, my understanding is that Mr. Rizzi had a concern that, 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 that dust was emanating from the trucks as they were being loaded on the road. So just making it really clear that all the staging is going to take place on your property in and out.
Absolutely.
And that's the watering, watering truck lined up to go.
Absolutely. Yep, yes.
Okay, well, Mr. Rizzi is online. I'm gonna, Mr. Rizzi, I'll allow you an opportunity to speak at this time if you'd like.
Um, I like, I like what Dalton's proposing. I don't have any issues with it. Um, it's a, it's going to be tough to crush in the wintertime and use water without the water trucks freezing up and the, the, the water on the roads freezing and making ice, ice rinks, but that's, that, I guess that's for them to, to, to figure out how to, how to work. Um, my still, my largest concern is the silica. And it always will be until we can get that figured out. Um, I, I don't wish any ill will towards the halls whatsoever. My concern is the, 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 the health of me and my family and the other people that are, that are impacted by the silica dust that comes off their plant. That, that's, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, if I can update the board, uh, as, as Jeff and I continue to try to learn more about all of this. And, and so as part of that, we've talked to, I think, three different agencies that monitor air quality. Is that fair, Jeff?
Okay.
And, and so what I think we've learned is, is, is that they all use the, the, the same kind of testing method. It's the method nine testing method. And so, uh, as part of that, we've also asked, if, if presented with a question like Mr. Rizzi poses, if there's a sample that has a high silica content, is that a consideration for, for you as part of your testing or part of your compliance? And what we've heard is it is not. And it, it, it isn't. And, and so, uh, uh, it's, it, it all boils down to apparently this method nine opacity testing or diffusion of dust, right? And so we were continuing to try to learn more, but I just wanted to report that, that the three agencies that we visited with would not get a sample. They would not analyze it for silica or whatever. Uh, their, again, their analysis, their concern is limited to the opacity. Make sense, everybody? And we're continuing, we're continuing to try to learn.
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
Um, we didn't get to finish our conversation yesterday and, and this is the one, what I wanted to, uh, to convey to you is opacity is what you can see, the dust particles you can see. The dust particles of silica that you cannot see are the ones that are most deadly. And those are the ones that you cannot find with opacity. And I, and that, that's what I wanted to, to, to tell you yesterday is those particles are a hundred times smaller than a grain of sand. And they can float in the air for a long time. They can travel long distances. Those are the particles that you do not want to breathe because they cause silicosis and cancer and a number of other, uh, harmful diseases. This is all, th- this is all written. This is all fact. It's from C D C. It's for the American Lung Can, uh, Institute. It's from the American Cancer Society. These are all facts. You cannot see those particles of silica. So the opacity test absent, actually does no good. And I spoke with Brett Graves this morning about that. And he agreed with that. He said, yes, opacity is what we can see. It's not what we can't see. So that's my concern.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
My grandpa started it, this pit in eighty-three. He worked at the pit for third, twenty-seven years. I mean, that silicosis is not something to mess around about, not to joke about. I understand that. He worked there for twenty-seven years, never had a problem whatsoever. My dad's worked there for twenty, shoot, I'm just gonna say twenty years. He's never had a problem and he was crushing everything by himself when there was very little, if any, regulation whatsoever. He's never had a problem. One, the wind perpetually always, almost always blows to the east, to the east southeast directly at my dad's house. My dad's house is less, less than five hundred yards from the gravel pit. From the entrance point of the gravel pit, Mark's house is eight hundred and eighty yards. Doesn't matter. But my dad has never had a problem. I've been working there for eight, nine years now. I don't have any issues.
It seems to me that this type of regulations above our pay grade, it'd be more like at the state level, would it not? D A N R.
So, and Mark knows this too. So D A N R is only concerned with the dust from the crusher. And so when they come out and do their opacity testing, they only do it at the crusher. For whatever, and so I think what they're doing is they're applying, they're enforcing EPA rules. So as I understand it, the EPA rules and thereby the state are only concerned with the opacity with the dust at the crusher. They're not concerned about it at the piles or anything else of the sort. And, and so I think it's also true that if, uh, if you are OSHA or M Shaw compliant, that you can be by the crusher uh, without any kind of respiratory device for up to eight hours a day. And, and theoretically, you're going to be okay with a health outcome, right? I, this is what I think I know. And, and so, so they're, they're not, there's no, as far as we've learned so far, there's no testing of the actual uh, dust of any of the, the, the substrate, the, the, the rock or anything of the sort. I'm gonna say it like this. This is not the scientific way to say it. It's prob, it apparently is immaterial for anybody else's purposes. It all boils down to opacity. If anybody else knows something different, please educate me.
So what it is, is, so the M Shaw is the only one that does this very specific test. They use a cyclonic meter. It's called a cyclonic meter. And what it does is there's just certain layers of filters and then the, the respiratory dust goes into that. And it's not like a vacuum or anything. It's just set where there's dust, you know, not, not in the crusher or anything like that, but just where there's dust made. And then that dust falls into, so it's supposed to represent like if someone's standing there and they're breathing. It doesn't make less sense, but it's what they do. And so what it does is there's multiple filters and then it catches the different layers of, of respiratory air, respiratory dust. And they test that and they've tested us. Well, they changed their, they changed their, their standard last year to from one hundred, um, micrograms per cubic meter, something like that, to fifty micrograms per cubic meter. And, and then for people that work in it, it's actually half of that. It's actually twenty-five micro, micrograms getting into the weeds a little bit. But ultimately there's never been an issue. We've never had a problem. We've never failed. We've never even had. And there's been, there's been times where we've had our crushers, guys that are working like the dust or the, uh, the ground guys that are literally in it all day long, no air conditioning, you know? They've been in it all day and they forgot they had their meter on and they still passed. So that's, that's kind of where it's at.
But we're, we're continuing to drive. And, and, and as we go along, we'll keep the board updated. We take Mr. Rizzi's concerns very seriously.
Sure.
But we can only respond with the data that we have and, and present that to you guys.
Also, Bruce, mention this.
Hold on, Mark. One second, please. Hold on, Mark, please.
So with Western Construction, their safety guy is an old M Shaw guy. I talked to him about it yesterday, I just remembered. But so there, he is bringing out his cyclonic meter and setting it up at the pit during the winter months. It's gonna be during the winter months. So there's gonna be a quarter of the dust, if that, just because of the moisture, of course. But he will be setting it up and he will be giving me the, the test results on that. So I didn't ask how long he was gonna do it, if he's gonna do it for the full eight hours or whatever, but I'll, I'll forward that information as soon as I get it.
Another data point. Okay, Mr. Rizzi, have you got another comment?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm, I'm very glad that the halls are, are happy and healthy. Um, I don't wish any ill will on them or anyone else. Um, but it is, it is a fact that, that dust, that silica dust can, um, affect different people differently, just like cigarette smoking. Um, some people can smoke for a few years and get cancer. Some people can smoke for thirty years and not get cancer. It, it affects different people differently. Now, there's a, there's a lady in Rapid City. Her ma, name is Morgan and I'm, hopefully I get her last name right, Trombley. She's an air quality specialist for environmental, uh, air quality. I spoke with her about this. She encouraged me to give you her number, her extension. Please feel free to call her. She is an a, as a specialist on silica. Um, she deals with different, uh, operations in and around Rapid City and even out in Dependington County. She, um, will be more than happy to talk to any of you people about this and, and educate you more on the dangers and the risks of silica. It's, it's, it's really not something that, that, that that we want floating in the air if we don't have to. That it, it's, it's what we don't want. And if you want me to e- email that to you, Bruce, or any of the commissioners, I'd be more than happy to email her contact so that you guys can get more informed about the, the, the health hazards, uh, of silica.
All right, thank you. Please do, Mark. This is Bruce. Please, uh, forward me your, the, any information you have. Okay. Uh, I see Jeff, uh, you, you prepared a proposed updated C U P.
Well, there's two, there's, there's two sets of, in there. One's an updated original that just kind of meets our current ordinance uh, far as section numbers and, and that stuff. And there's also, um, newer conditions that meet or are more similar to the, the, uh, conditions we've done in the present.
Mr. Chairman, and those revised conditions that meet our currents or more close to our current conditions, those will be shared with Dalton and also Mr. Rizzi. And, and so I haven't heard any, at least from Dalton's perspective, any objection to those where they're one through twenty-five or something like that. Um, and, and so, yeah, those are presented to you for your consideration today. By the way, as, as I think, I guess you wouldn't have to. The underlying issue is whether or not the original C P allows for this winter crushing at this winter activity. But we thought as long as we're at it, maybe update the conditions.
Okay, my understanding is that you've used rock to around the perimeter to do your trucks going. Do you agree with number eight that says you'll have a, a, uh, fence or a gate in the entrance be locked and?
We're, we're fine with that. I was, I was, that was one of the things I'd like to bring up kind of in this is if, if, if we don't need a gate, that's, that's, we don't really need one, you know, but we can definitely, we, yeah, we says, I, we intend to put one in, in the future, but um, just kind of depends on the timeline for what we got for, for, it's not gonna happen this winter, you know, we probably have to wait till, till spring or summer to get that done. But we don't necessarily need one, but if we need to put one in, that's fine, that's fine. Um.
Why, why have, James? Have, have we required a locked gate on other pits?
And I'm aware of.
I can maybe explain a little bit. So the first set of conditions that you see
I can maybe explain a little bit, so the first set of conditions that you see, it was such an old conditional use permit that we did not have a digital version of the conditions. So all we did is literally take what you guys had done back in 1983, the conditions that they put in place, and that's what that is. I think the recommendation is, is since we're doing it and we've done it with a couple of other CUPs as we've gone through, is we've had you update them to the current. So I think two part, do you want to keep the existing or do you want to bring it up to what we've done with other current CUPs? And that's the second set of conditions. That was kind of the proposal, because we've kind of done this with a few others, that we've said, okay, this was, you know, 20 years old, can we go ahead and bring them into compliance with the new ones, which would update DNR, you know, everything else would be ENR. We had to update to DNR and then, um, taking out some of those ones that we haven't seen in other ones. So that would be the suggestion.
The proposed number eight to me, and Mr. Hall just spoke on it, I, I would think would be for the benefit of, uh, quarry owner of maybe trying to keep people out of there, but otherwise, I don't know why the, the general public are for safety matters, that would even be necessary. That's my opinion on that.
The only issue we've ever had is in the winter or weekends or something like that, there'll be a razor or something that'll go through there. But since we put the rocks in place, so we haven't even had one, so, but if, if, if it would make, if it'd be better for everybody, it's fine too, it's not a big deal.
Well, I can't make any motions, but.
Well, I would suggest on number eight, so we're looking at, just so I make sure we're looking, all looking the same list, this is the December 17th.
Yes.
At the top. So on, on number eight, instead of being fenced or gated with a lock, I would take out gated with a lock, that's like, uh, Mr. Hall said, that's up to the, the owner of the quarry to, to protect that. But fenced or barrier, I, I would put in, so it, it doesn't require a fence, it just needs to require rocks that, that keep people from, from being able to pull off the road at unauthorized spots.
Yeah, I look at the rock as being a barrier, I mean.
They're big enough rocks.
Yeah, they are.
So is that your motion, sir?
Well, I don't think we can do a motion, so we would need a motion to accept the entire ones and then amend this motion, so. I would, I would ask that we rephrase that before we do a motion to accept the entire, all the conditions.
Yeah, I, I just had a, a question, there's one regarding hours of operation. Is there, um, is there a way that we could extend that, so like, except like for this winter, for instance, you know, as it gets dark at four o'clock in the evening and it's light at 4:00 AM, you know? I don't, we don't expect the crusher to be at 4:00 AM, that'd be ridiculous, but say like 6:00 AM, we say like crushing could start at 6:00 AM?
Well, this, they say that.
It does, it's the closing date that you're concerned about.
On the, on the, the new, on the new CUP.
Yep, it's from 6:00 AM to no later than a half hour before sunset.
That's, that's not new, that, so you're, that's the existing conditions as they sit right now.
December 11th is.
Number 11 is the existing condition.
Right. So you're all right with the 6:00 AM?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Bruce? I, I think that they should be required to sprinkle down, uh, as the dust has been crushed and I don't know if it could take place the winter or not.
Well, he, he said that they were prepared to do what they could to keep it down and.
Well, that, well, that's Western, I talked to him yesterday about and asked him how they were gonna handle the dust if it, if it came up. And they said that they prefer to crush in the wintertime just because there's more moisture on the ground and in the material, so it actually suppresses it almost for you, but, but I said, but, I said, if a problem comes up, is, I said, are you, are you capable to, to take care of it? And they said they'll do what they can.
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't ask them for, for a plan or anything like that, that's, that's just kind of a sparseness.
Sounds good. Hey, Mr. Rizzi, you have another comment?
I did, um, several things, first of all, um, with, when it comes to the fence and whatnot, that's, that's up to you guys. I think that when they first issued this conditional use permit, the county commissioner saw that the, the county road went through their, their mining permit and they took that into consideration where they thought that, uh, it would be best to have it fenced or, or, or barriered. That's up to you guys, that's just my thinking, I, I, I think that they, they had the foresight to do that. As far as crushing, um, during the winter with no, uh, water on the, the crusher, I think that as dry as it's been, and we've had a very dry whole year, actually, I'm, I, I'm, I'm hoping that they can keep the, the dust down, I have my doubts. Um, and I understand that when it comes to, uh, putting water on it, it's going to be a, it's gonna be an uphill battle because of the, the temperatures, because it's gonna get colder, it's before it gets warmer. So hopefully we can, uh, make that work, hopefully they can make it work. But, um, as a landowner right next door to this, um, I won't tolerate extra dust coming onto my property. Um, and I, and, and, and I will, I will ask the halls again if there is, if, if there's too much dust coming on, I'll ask them to do something and we can.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, praise your board here.
I'd, I'd like to draw attention because John is still here too. So in this, one that has the gray out things, um, John had requested that he be removed, I believe, from those.
Yeah.
That's why they're highlighted.
Number three, who you're talking?
So number three, um, three, four, and six, those were original conditions. So I mean, that's just, I, I, I guess I'll let John speak as to why he doesn't think he should, I, I don't know.
Well, I think those actually implied that the highway department would be in charge of dust control within the boundaries of the board. Anything outside 66 feet of that road, we have no business being a part of it.
So that, just so we don't get too far.
It kind of reads like the highway superintendent in charge of enforcing the CUP conditions, so it's really trying to reflect that complaints and, 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 and so forth, going through planning and zoning. And leave John out of it to the extent that, unless he's implicated.
Maintenance, dust suppression, and drainage shall be implemented by the operator, period. And get rid of the rest of it.
I suspect if there's a problem of dust on that section of county road, you will let us know and we will take appropriate.
Absolutely.
And I was gonna chat with you too, John, I mean, if, if, when we have our water truck, do you want us to hit the road to?
If we're gonna adopt these, we gotta get rid of the extra.
So as long as they do that, um, I think this one will be removed. I didn't know, so John, one of the questions was the Lawrence County Highway Superintendent shall be contacted prior to the transportation of the subject crusher on any county road?
That would be fine, I would, I would, I would leave that in, like, I would like to be notified when they have equipment being transported on our county road.
Okay, that was the only other one I had a question on, I think, with that.
Bruce? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rizzi has come in. Go ahead, sir.
Um, with, in, in regards to the hours when they're gonna be crushing at 6:00 AM, it's going to be dark at that time. So I'm, I, I'm assuming they are going to be putting up light plants?
If it's, if it's dark, they're not gonna crush, it's just to get started, you know, just so everything.
Your Mr. Hall's comment, sir?
Yeah, I, 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 I heard his comment and then, and then we're, it's still gonna be one half hour before sunset, correct?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right, I, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
John, what do you want to do with the conditions?
Well, if I've kept up here, I would move that we update the current conditions with the following changes. Uh, number three, to just maintenance, dust suppression, and drainage shall be implemented by the operator, period, and might delete the rest of that. Uh, delete the entire number four. Uh, on number eight, we would strike out, shall be fenced or gated with a lock and insert protected by a barrier. Eight, I can help you with that.
My only question is on number four, I think the first part needs to say, because he did submit a dust suppression, so he's met that condition now.
Just get rid of the operator, something for with that county highway.
Can do that, strike out that.
Hey, everyone's on board of what?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that was a motionary?
It was, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Well, I still want to sprinkle, hold the dust, is that in there?
It's on you.
Not as much as they can, they have to do it.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
Well, it's still a part of their, their dust suppression program, but it, it applies in the summer and the winter.
Okay.
Any further just, I have got him here. During that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
All right. We are, I think we've completed all of the business reports for the meeting. We are down from items from the public. Is there anyone on the line that would like to, uh, make any public comments? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing that, anyone in the body of the room, in the audience?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, items from commissioners.
Yeah, I have one concern there, uh, the city has, uh, run their walking path, uh, at an angle and gone across the road, so they got, uh, the, that's a truck road and they gotta stop twice. On there, one over the interstate, one on Highway 14 there, and I, uh, if they'd run their walking path all on the, uh, east side, well, they wouldn't have to do that, but they put a little bit of rocks on the left side.
Well, the pedestrians are the ones that have to stop and wait for the traffic.
Yeah, we, how, how many of them are gonna do that?
Well, they don't wanna get run over.
Yeah. Good point.
Well, I tell you, we put that road, road out there as a truck stop because, uh, there was a, a young kid killed in town. And so they got, out there, no, we don't wanna, uh, jeopardize that.
Good point.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, Christmas, uh, dinner is at noon, right? And Mr. Chairman, we did do a notice of form, that's been posted 24 hours in advance, advising everybody that we spot potential foul weather. Enough, no, no official, but this will be. Hey, anything else, gentlemen?
Can I?
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you. I'm gonna, uh, end the meeting now, folks, for a while, thank you.